We'd like to call this meeting to order and of course, welcome everybody who is here in chambers or who might be watching on our YouTube channel. We appreciate your presence. Tonight is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. We'll turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith, for roll call.
Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Council, or sorry, Vice Mayor Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Pat?
President.
Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation will be given by Pastor Albert Johnson. Is he here tonight? A living faith, assembly of God. Having not seen him here already, I have asked Mrs. Janet Wilson to give our invocation and after which we will have a pledge of allegiance given by Vice Mayor Samley. If we could all stand for that, please.
Please rise and uncover. Dear God, we thank you for the great privilege thou hast bestowed upon us again to assemble for this meeting. We pray and beg of thee to keep us thy servants from temptation, to keep us in health and strengthen us in spirit, that we may perform the duties to our city and our county and our state. Thank the, please bless the first responders and our military. Keep them safe and in, out of harms way. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Thank you. Item number one on our agenda, awards recognition. One, a proclamation, National Literacy Month. And I know we have Ms. Erin Roper here from, so Erin, if you want to see it, I'll read this real quick and then you can come up if you'd like. Whereas literacy is the single most effective way to promote global prosperity and eliminate poverty, and cultures that are literate embrace the key lever of change for economic development, social growth, and environmental protection. And cultures best promote and support democracy, political stability, and peace based on many factors but rely on as a pivotal factor, literacy. An assurance of literacy for all citizens best promotes peace, human rights, environmental protection, and prosperity. And literacy brings improved self-confidence to the individual, a heightened sense of belonging, and improved job opportunities. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of City of Kingman, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2023, as National Literacy Month, and further declare September 8th, 2023, as International Literacy Day. I strongly encourage each of us to recognize the contributions made by our local literacy program, KALP, Kingman Area Literacy Program, as they celebrate 10 years of providing 100% volunteer-run and 100% free tutoring services as well as other literacy and adult education programs in Mojave County for the significant contributions they have made and continue to make in our community. And of course, I have signed this proclamation. Erin, would you like to come forth and say anything first and then we'll get a picture, please? And those, of course, who are accompanying you.
We have Bruce here from Welcome. That's our parent organization, our 501(c)(3). If you want to give them a...
Could you make sure you speak into the mic, please?
Welcome is the 501(c)(3) umbrella group for all three literacy councils in Mojave County, of which KALP is one.
Great.
And to celebrate our 10 years and National Literacy Month, we're giving away over 1,000 books to kids in Kingman throughout the month. And I hope everyone can come and join us on this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00. That's our kickoff event. And then we'll also be giving them out during the parade. So we'll have to compete with candy, but I'm pretty confident. And then at the end of the month, at the comic convention. So I hope that all the kids in Kingman can enjoy books in their home. So thank you so much for honoring literacy efforts by all the groups in Kingman.
Well, thank you for all you do and we appreciate, of course, I grew up and my kids grew up with reading is fundamental. I mean, literacy is so important in our world today and at different levels. So we appreciate that. Council, would you like to join me, please, and we'll get a picture with Ms. Roper and...
Can I have everybody's... Can everybody scut this way just so we can get a little bit away from that? Smiling, smiling, keep it up front.
Smiling, right here, right here. It's intentional.
Item number two, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited, limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Tonight, we have Ms. Barbara Carpenter first. Barbara, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward, I can share. Of course, we both wish it was bigger print.
My name is Barbara Carpenter and I live in Kingman. And thank you to, to, can't remember your name, Mayor.
Right there.
Hey, I'm too short to read it. No. Thanks. Thank you, Mayor and council members. What I've given you is a, it was on your website, City of Kingman. And I was complaining about someone in our neighborhood and I sent it to you. And from that, I found out that this, all of these nuisance abatement and the, the codes are no longer in effect. You did, after I sent in the information and complained, you did remove it. But I'd like to know when it was changed. So this is still in effect? Then why aren't we enforcing it? I mean, I'm sorry, guys. We love Kingman. We all love Kingman and we want Kingman to be a really nice place for people to live. And there are some people in my neighborhood that are pathetic. And I'd really like to see you guys jerk a knot in their head. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have our attorney here and of course, representative from the police department, Barbara. So they have been heard, you have been heard. So actually, Janet, you have a comment to comment during following items. So we will move on from that. Item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counselors, anything that needs to be polled and discussed?
No, your honor. No, Mayor.
Counselor, yes, counselor?
Nothing.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Can we have a motion then to approve our consent agenda, items A through K?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, old business. For a Bird Ride, Bird Ride Scooter Agreement. The city entered into an agreement with Bird Rides Incorporated for a pilot scooter program in February 2022. The pilot program proved successful and now Bird Rides Incorporated is presenting the city with a four-year operating agreement under similar terms and adds expanded coverage, identified scooter drop-off pickup locations, increased number of units, and the option to counsel, cancel with, within 30 days' notice. Staff recommends approval. Josh, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. We have Kylie Floodman with Bird Rides, Inc., who is going to give an update on how the program went and then answer any questions you might have about the program.
Welcome, Kylie.
Hello, Mayor and members of the council. Can you hear and see me okay?
Yes, Kelly. Okay.
All right. I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen here with the presentation. Alrighty. Everybody see the screen okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mayor and members of council for, for having me tonight. As Josh mentioned, I'm here to present how the program's been going over the past year since it was approved for an expansion, passed the pilot program. So my name's Kylie Floodman. I'm a government partnerships manager here at Bird. Been with the company for over a year and a half now, but I am newer to the Arizona markets. And so that's kind of why I'm coming in here. Previously, my colleague Sean was overseeing the markets, but since then we transitioned over. So just wanted to give an update on the ridership that we've seen since, really since we launched in the beginning of 2022. So in case you're not familiar with Bird, just want to give a little refresher of what we are. We are a dockless micro mobility company. Our goal is to have clean and sustainable transportation, alternative options for people as well that don't have vehicles. Our goal is to get people out of cars, lower those emissions, and at the very least, provide a fun and convenient way to get around town. So it works on an app-based service. If you haven't used it before, it's pretty simple. You can see all of your locations throughout the app. If you open it up, we are dockless. We don't have specific docking stations, as I'm sure you've realized, around town. But essentially, what we do is we allow it to be a pretty easy, low startup cost for the user to actually take a ride and try out micro mobility. So just to give a little bit of highlight from, you know, how the program has been running, on the right-hand side, I'm going to dive into this a little bit further in a moment, but you'll see where our rides have gone throughout the city of Kingman. So obviously, a lot in downtown, but the goal of micro mobility and Bird is not just to be an entertainment transportation, but really to be a reliable form of transportation to get around town and not just the, the big populated areas. So as you'll see, we have a lot of ridership that actually goes all the way up to the northeast side of the city. And for us, that means that people are actually riding around and getting to and from businesses, lunches, work around town at night. So we love to see the ridership actually expand outside of just the downtown. That's a positive thing from our end. In terms of the ridership stats that we've seen, we've had almost 10,000 rides throughout the city of Kingman and 2,700 users. So the unique riders are, every single user has actually taken a ride. So probably a lot of residents, also some visitors that have come through town. And the average duration that we see of our rides is about 17 minutes. So what I like to point out here is back to that point of it being a form of transportation. 17 minutes can be a joyride. A lot of times, it's going to take you a couple of miles throughout the city. And on that point, the average mileage that one will take on a bird is 3.3 miles. With that, what this equates to is about 2.08 metric tons of CO2 saved for a bird ride. And we do use statistics that basically says about one-third of our rides would have equated in a car ride. So rather than someone walking, we only look at what a bird ride would have probably equated in a car ride. And so that metric ton is basically what you have saved throughout the rides that have been taken in Kingman. And then total, kind of a fun stat that we like to share, how many miles someone has ridden on a bird within Kingman. So Kingman riders have ridden almost 15,000 miles in total. So with that, we are looking at, you know, what, what does the next phase of micro mobility in Kingman look like? And from what we've seen with our ridership and also in conversations with the city, an expansion is something that is, you know, desired and that can really service the community well. So these are ridership trends that we have seen. Last year, we shared a similar map with you all. What I noticed in looking at the differences between the two is that it didn't expand, there wasn't as many ride ends and ride starts in that northeast area of the city. So again, what that really shows us is that people are genuinely using Bird to get to and from the main downtown area out to different areas of the city. We saw a lot more volume of ride ends and starts over there, which means people are genuinely wanting to explore. So with that, we look at what would riders do if they had an expanded operating area? We expect them to go even further to all those businesses that are up even north of the highway. To that, to that extent, that doesn't mean necessarily that you're going to see all the ridership go up there. What we really utilize this expanded operating for is to see where riders want to go to and from. Do they want to go up to the Home Depot? Do they want to just stay in their core areas? And the beauty of, I think, a program like this, and especially having it be long-term, is that allows for the flexibility to work with the city to identify what's working, what's not. And the best part of it being tech and app-based is that everything is really flexible. Something's not working, we can always revert it. If we want to expand even more and we're seeing the ridership demand, we can work with the city to do that. So this is what has been initially proposed in conversations with the city. And in addition to that, also increasing the fleet size to 100 vehicles as our cap in order to help better supply that increased demand that we expect to happen with the expanded area. Outside of that, we do have a local fleet manager who you've probably seen running around the city, picking up our vehicles, charging them, moving them around. He's really passionate about it. When we spoke to him about our council presentation and what the expansion would look like, he was very, very excited about the possibility to service even more of the city. So that's kind of the highlights. Happy to answer any additional questions that come up. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kylie. Questions for Kylie from council? Yes, Vice Mayor?
I do have a question. So the individual that's taking care of all the Bird scooters currently, are there any plans for him to expand his staff to handle the 100, the almost double the fleet that he has? And I say that because there are quite a few stragglers that have been left here and there. And I see them and I hear from my constituents about them often. So I just wonder, does he have the manpower to handle a fleet of 100?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your question, Vice Mayor. Very fair question as well. Generally, our standard fleet size for one fleet manager is all the way up to 150 to 200 vehicles, depending on the city and depending what that ridership looks like and how active that ridership is. So a fleet of 100 is very manageable for a fleet manager. We do have our internal key performance metrics that we monitor extremely closely and if they're not hitting them, that requires us to either reevaluate their performance, require them to get more staff, or alternatively, if it is not working out, to look for a alternative fleet manager that can actually manage that fleet size. One thing that I would also like to give a caveat to is that just because the fleet size is 100, that basically means that we are contractually allowed to deploy that many. It doesn't mean that we will actually have 100 on the road at all times. We look at a metric internally called our rides per deployed vehicle per day to identify how many vehicles should be out on the road. We like to target around one ride per vehicle per day. A little bit less, a little bit over is okay. But we don't like to generally oversupply a market because to your point, it leads to even more instances of vehicles that are just lying idle for a couple of days. It's not beneficial to us. It's not beneficial to the city. So while we have that increased cap size to 100, or that's what we're requesting, it's really to meet that demand, should that demand come. But that does not mean that we will for sure deploy 100 every single day out in the city. It'll depend on the ridership and the demand that we're seeing.
Okay, I, I do have a second question. So with the area mapping that's being proposed, do we have, as a city, have the opportunity to reduce that area should we feel it necessary to do so?
Yes, absolutely. So our goal is for this to be beneficial for everyone. Should it cause more concerns or more issues than value being added, there is no problem with it being reverted back, kind of what I alluded to during my presentation, with the beauty of this being a technology-run and GPS-run business. It's as simple as a couple of days redrawing our zoning and then setting it live. So we always want to make sure this is still providing the value that, you know, as a council, you are all agreeing to. Should that not be the case, we are always happy to revisit. I'm always happy to come back to a council meeting virtually or meet with the city and, and discuss what that looks like. So everything that we're proposing here, of course, is always adjusted and we're able to either improve it or decrease it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor.
Good evening. A couple of questions, please. On the demographics for the users, what percentage is tourists as opposed to residents?
I don't have that right at my fingertips right now. I can grab kind of the closest look that we can look to it. And basically, what we do is we look at the billings of code. That's unfortunately, the only way that we're really able to identify what that metric looks like. That said, I can follow up with Josh on those numbers that I find. I can also include a couple other user demographics, female, male, age ranges. I always find it pretty interesting to look at. So I can pull some of that information and send it to Josh after this. But just want to add that caveat that it's the best guess that we can have at tourist first local. And it's just based off the billings of code.
Okay, thank you. One more question. In the contract, there's a lot of do's and don'ts, especially on accountability of the user. How's that enforced?
Yeah, so it's enforced mostly through kind of reporting from the city, from our fleet manager, and from the constituents. So a lot of times, what we'll do in the city, I don't believe we have it set up quite yet in Kingman, but I'm happy to do so, is we'll create a city-specific 311 email. Anybody, city constituent can email in about either a vehicle that needs to be moved or rebalanced, irregular, or sorry, reckless or irresponsible riding. And what we can do is we can suspend the rider or we can actually terminate the account as well. Obviously, our goal is to encourage people to use micro mobility safely. So we don't like to terminate immediately unless it's, you know, a really unsafe instance where that individual should not be on a scooter. But we do take safety very seriously. Unfortunately, similar to somebody riding a car and not stopping at a stop sign, if you don't see it happen, if you're not aware of it, you can't rectify that behavior. But we do have a pretty much no, or zero tolerance policy on that. And we have the means to warrant, suspend, and terminate accounts.
Thank you, Counselor Savage. Okay. Kylie, along those lines too, I know it's been brought to, I think, each of us as members of the council that, you know, the minimum age is what, 18 years old to be able to rent one of these? And it's one thing if mom and dad are there with their family, because sometimes they'll have a 17-year-old or a 16-year-old and they'll rent one for them. I'm sure, I don't know how you would do it, but how do you police an 18-year-old or younger borrowing their mom and/or dad's credit or debit card and riding that way?
Yeah, so there's, it is a tricky one. And it's a very fair question because unfortunately, we do see that happen throughout our cities. And to that point, we, we can't really control, you know, a parent that's willing to give their child their credit card and put it on there. I think this is a perfect example of that reckless riding, where if we're seeing someone that's clearly 12 years old or 10 years old, we will terminate that count, account if we, if we get notice of it because that individual is not actually permitted to ride. I will say they're also in, they are, they are not on our valid rider agreement at that point. So if they get in an accident, if they hurt somebody else, they are completely responsible for that. Obviously, we don't want to get to that point in the first place, which is why if we are aware of that, we will terminate that account. Unfortunately, it is just one of those things that slips through. That said, we can increase our rider messaging if we're seeing a lot of instances of underage riding in the city and make sure that people are aware that if you are riding underage, you are in violation of our rider agreement, your account can be terminated and you can be fined. So we can put out our messaging and really kind of rely on our partnership with the city to see what's really happening in terms of the actual ridership. If it's a lot of riders that are underage, we can look at turning on an ID verification for a month. But usually, we don't like to do that only because it prohibits a lot of people that actually need to have transportation. If it's someone that doesn't have a car or doesn't have a driver's license, we want to make sure that we are being an equitable and accessible form of transportation as well. But that is something that we have at our disposal as a last-case resort.
Okay. Thank you, Kylie. Yes, Counselor.
Go ahead.
Can you clarify? I think that I just heard you say that if a, an underage, like a 10-year-old, is in an accident riding alone, that Bird scooters isn't responsible. So are you saying your insurance won't cover the person they hit and hurt?
No, I apologize for that. Either we, I, we indemnify the city. It probably would go through our, our internal attorneys and what that would look like. I would have to come back to on that in clarification. I don't want to speak out of turn. I understand how that was misconstrued and I misspoke. Let me clarify, I don't believe that's fully the case. We do have a full indemnification for the city. There is a certain extent that has rider insurance as well and something within our rider agreement that speaks to insurance. So I can also include that in my follow-up to Josh on clarification on that point, because I want to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn.
Okay, I think, I almost think we need to table this until we have all the rest of info. I only see kids riding. I don't see them with their parents, you know. I see them on the sidewalks. So all of my initial concerns, you know, were true.
Valid.
They seem like a lot of fun. But if there's a piece there where no one's responsible, you know, for an accident, that's, that is concerning. So I'd almost want to table this and get her follow-up responses.
I would like to clear, I mean, definitely at the very least, our indemnification probably makes Bird responsible at the end of the day. It is pretty airtight. I mean, we operate in 350 cities nationwide. We operate globally. So I do want, I get, I totally understand your concerns. But at the end of the day, there definitely would be a responsible party. I just don't want to speak out of turn on who that would be. If it was a child, that meant that their parent probably agreed to the rider agreement. So there is a guilty party in that sense. Bird does have an indemnification to the city. There is some sort of protections for the rider, but there is also the rider obligation, no matter who that is. So just want to clarify that point. I would say, at the end of the day, from our end, we haven't seen a lot of instances of accidents. I'm not sure if the city has seen something else on their end. Our complaints have been fairly low, not, not zero, obviously. And I know you as a council hear a lot more than we probably do. Unfortunately, I understand that it kind of gets fielded through your offices, through your constituents. But I would like to say, we do take safety very seriously. If it is kids that are being, if it's mostly kids that are being, that you're seeing actually riding, I'm happy to talk to my team about turning on our ID verification. I think at the end of the day, we don't want to promote unsafe ridership. We want to promote people that are actually using it for transportation. A little bit of fun, right? I think scooters can be fun and I don't want to discredit that. But at the end of the day, it is a transportation option. So if that's really a concern and something that we're seeing a lot on the ground in Kingman, want to make sure we're addressing that.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you got a comment?
Yeah, to that, to that rider ID verification, I would, I would almost require that be a part of the service. If I were to approve this today, that would be something that I would want that to be included. I understand it may restrict some, but if we are seeing the majority of the ridership being underage, then that's the only way, as I understand you to say, to control it.
Yeah, similar to how like in a car, right? If you're riding underage and you get pulled over, it's by your ID, right? Outside of that, there's really no way to tell if somebody in a car is actually able to be in a car. I do just want to stress, and I can send over some data as well, it is really prohibited to certain individuals and certain groups that are trying to ride. And a big piece of what we do as well as our equitable piece and being a transportation option that's affordable for people that don't have it, being that first mile, last mile of public transportation. So you're not walking to get to and from the bus, something like that. So I just want to reiterate from, you know, an operator perspective, an industry perspective, the ID verification can definitely have some benefits. Having it required and mandated, first of all, every single ride is extremely prohibited. And so I would not recommend it from an operator perspective. That said, a lot of times what we can do is we can turn it on, maybe at the beginning of summer, I think is a big area of underage riding. Kids are out of school. They're running around, they're out throughout town. So maybe every June, start of June 1st, July 1st, we can turn it on and something like that. But that's probably the extent of the recommendation that I would give so that we are not actually prohibiting people that are really relying on. so that we are not actually prohibiting people that are really relying on transportation.
Okay. And then to the indemnification. Carl, can you clarify under the indemnification, paragraph three?
There is a demnification in here.
So, they are holding harmless, the riders holding harmless, the city.
And I was going to hold Carl into this. Any more comment you could make on this, Carl, as far as from the city side?
Well, and that's the intent with the indemnification clause, to demnify, hold harmless, or demnify, defend, and hold harmless. So, that means if there's any issues that arise, we pass that information off to them and they're the ones that defend any of those cases that would be associated with the city. And we are held harmless, so we're not responsible legally or any kind of monetary payout. So, it's all on Bird.
Okay. That makes me more comfortable.
And that's pretty much standard that we have in all of our agreements. We put indemnification clauses in.
And that was on the first agreement anyway, from the get-go, we've had that there. So, Counsel Saly.
So, that's good, that the city isn't on the hook. But think about if you're walking down the sidewalk and one of these kids hits you really hard and you get hurt. The city's not going to pay. And now, you've got a kid who, you know, maybe their parents have insurance, maybe they don't, maybe, you know. So, we kind of have to look out for our citizens as well when you've got kids driving too fast on a sidewalk and nobody's really responsible for paying that medical bill for the person that gets hurt.
Well, I would think from what Kylie is telling us, then that person would then sue Bird because the city's been indemnified from it. So, Bird would be the authority there.
But my concern was is that Bird's saying because an underage rider was operating without an adult, that now Bird isn't responsible either. So, now it's back on this kid's parents, you know, that...
Right. Kylie, you have some more information?
Again, I'll provide the exact clause for you all and what that entails. But yeah, to clarify, I don't believe there's ever been a case in our six years of operating where no one's been responsible. At the very least, it was probably Bird. Like I said, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I do want to give the confidence that at the end of the day, it probably would fall back on to Bird. At the very least, it could be that parent. But similarly to how, again, I compare it to cars because cars have way more accidents than scooters. So, there's a lot more instances of this. But if someone doesn't have insurance, you know, at the end of the day, it would fall on to whoever that party would be. The beauty of this case is that you do have a outside third-party operator who is indemnifying. So, a lot of times that liability would fall on to our company. I just don't want to speak out of turn, especially on a council meeting. And I want to make sure that I have all the information. But I do want to provide that confidence that at the end of the day, it's not something that just gets ignored. I don't think there's really ever been a case of that. But I will get that information over to you as well, just so you have that peace of mind. But thank you. I don't know the individual who is reading that out from the clause, but I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you, Kylie. Counsel Ward, I know I had a question, and Sean.
Yeah, what I've seen with these scooters is laying in the street and laying on the sidewalk. And I know there's a guy that's supposed to take care of them. But how often does he check on those scooters? Because just about every time you come downtown, you'll see them laying in the street. And on Eastern in particular, you see them laying across the sidewalk by the bus stops. It hasn't been anything that I would be proud of. I know I've had a lot of complaints from citizens about it, about not being able to use the sidewalk because the scooters are there. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel Ward. Counsel Savage. How many markets did you say you guys were in?
Over 350.
Over 300? How many are college towns?
Oh, a couple hundred.
A hundred? How many are beach towns?
Probably 125. Beach towns, not too many.
Not too many? Okay. So, typically, your other markets, you got a higher-aged pool to pull from, possibly, correct?
So, I actually started out the company working with specifically our smaller two mid-sized cities. So, I think right now about 7,000 or 8,000 is the... I historically worked in the central region in the Midwest. So, I oversaw markets that saw populations as low as like 7,500, 9,000 to 20,000. So, I have a lot of experience and I've seen, I think at one point, I was managing over 60 and not anything below 100,000. So, I definitely have seen, you know, Kingman is not... You know, it's not an odd case of markets that we're in. I think our goal at Bird is to not only bring micro mobility and progressive transportation to large, much-retalled areas. But, you know, one thing that Bird is really focused on over the past two years is introducing this to cities of all sizes.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel Walker?
Yeah, I have a question for. Is there a set time that your local manager is supposed to start staging these scooters? What time they start, what time normally it's reset by?
Yeah, I believe, well, so, the first answer, no. So, he is an independent contractor that we work with. So, at the end of the day, this is his business. He, like I said, he has KPIs that we monitor. So, a couple of those include time and collect, which essentially means a vehicle that has been idle for three or more days, it will have a basically alert on his end. The reason why you will see some that are, for example, the bus stop, obviously laying down across the sidewalk is not how it's supposed to be. But the reason why you will see vehicles that aren't immediately moved or every day picked up and rebalanced is kind of the nature of our model and the nature of a lot of, if not most of the micro mobility companies, is dockless. So, essentially what that means is as a rider, you take it from point A to point B. And the next rider that wants to take it, let's say it's someone getting off the bus because someone rode to the bus, then you take it from the bus somewhere else. And so, we kind of let the natural flow of ridership dictate some of the staging. That said, some vehicles do end up in odd parts of town or super spread out because someone rode it there. So, if it hasn't been ridden in a couple of days, our fleet manager will go around, pick it up, and rebalance it to an area of higher demand where we generally see more ride starts. I think I'm kind of seeing a bit of a trend of that not happening frequently enough. So, I think that's something that we should discuss as well, should this push through to a more permanent program, which is the timing that's expected from the city side. I think setting up that 3-1-1 email will be super beneficial. So, that way, if it does come through your constituents, it comes right to us. When we do receive requests to rebalance, I believe we have, I think it's seven or 12 hours within the business day. If it's on a weekend, it reverts to that Monday at like 7:00 AM. So, it kind of fluctuates. I know I gave you a long answer, but I want to give you the full picture of kind of how it works.
Okay. Well, I get how they'll ride it from the bus to home and then leave it in the neighborhood and they'll probably take it back the next day. Is there any way to detect that the scooter is laying on its side?
We don't have that, unfortunately, because sometimes it will be weather-dependent as well. If it falls over, unfortunately, you see instances of people kicking them over as they're walking by, people that don't like them. I've heard that, unfortunately. So, we don't. That said, even if it's not being rebalanced, our fleet manager is supposed to, as they're driving around doing their rounds, if they see them laying down, pick them up. So, obviously, I have a list of things that our fleet manager needs to improve on from this meeting. And I think from that end, maybe we should be looking at him hiring somebody else, right? To help manage the fleet if he's not able to stick to the standards and the city is seeing a pretty big volume of scooters on the side, blocking a sidewalk, etc.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because I do see a lot laying down. And I wasn't sure if there was an alarm that could be tripped and let them know.
There's an alarm if you move it without it being in ride. But unfortunately, there's nothing to dictate if it's fallen over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Kylie from council? Okay, we have a member of the public, Janet Wilson, would like to make a statement.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Thank you for listening. Everything has been said that I planned on saying. But how many times do you go shopping with a helmet in your purse and you put on a helmet to ride a bike? Zero, none. Up at the green hole is where their kill switch is. So, they ride them up there and they leave them up there for three to four weeks, young lady. I have pictures that show that they were abandoned up there for three to four weeks. I sent them to some of the council members. I think they're a blight and there are only kids riding them. I don't see a single adult riding them. And I know the helmet laws, they're supposed to be riding a helmet. But how many carry a helmet in their backpack to ride a scooter? None. So, maybe their parents, but during soccer and Little League, that place was littered with them. And that's how the parents got them to their practice. Take one of them scooters from downtown and then they leave it there. I think the kill switch is up there at the green hole, that that's as far as they can go. So, I want you to consider it. It's a little bit of revenue for the city. I was just in Charlotte, North Carolina, and they're everywhere. And they're very, 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 very popular. But that is a very big city with lots and lots of miles of surface to ride. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Janet. Well, I know there's pluses and minuses on this. I know from a tourism standpoint, there's pluses there. Unfortunately, we oftentimes just see the negative. Once in a while, we see tourists riding them and it's a great thing. Counsel Saly did mention she would like to table that. Would you still like to do that and tell me more information?
I'm opposed to tabling it. I want to shoot this down now. I agree with Ms. Wilson completely. It's a blight. These things are eyesores. I think that they're tacky and overall silly for the city. Bird scooters have no business being in Kingman, seriously. Let's just kill the bill. Let's vote no.
Counsel, temperature? Vice Mayor?
I hear what you're saying and I do agree with some of what you have said. I like the idea of curtailing the underage use. I also like the idea of holding the manager or franchisee accountable and to some higher standards, which if he's, you know, there's no reason for those to be sitting there for three weeks. There's no reason for them to even be sitting there for three days, in my opinion, is way too long. They need to be repositioned. So, I'm not opposed, I mean, I'm not opposed to switching it up a little bit and restricting the program just a little bit, just to get a handle on it. I do feel like I have seen tourists riding on these. I know that that's how they're getting around downtown. People come into our community from other communities and they're looking for this type of transportation. So, I'm opposed to just nixing the program. I think it could be tweaked. That's my opinion.
Well, and what is nice, as mentioned in our literature, is, you know, there is an option to cancel within 30 days. So, if we continue to receive complaints, we can always exercise that option. I am in favor of it. I still, when we first discussed this initial program, it was a concern of mine because I've gone to other cities and as has been mentioned already, they look like litter oftentimes laying down on their sides. And how we can enforce that, I don't know. There's no way to do that. Counsel Walker?
And I see them being ridden on the sidewalks, which I thought they were supposed to be on the street. So, that's an issue. You know, I haven't heard of anybody getting hurt yet that got ran over by one, but that's one of my biggest fears.
Always. Once again, there's pluses and minuses in this. I agree with Vice Mayor. I really don't want to nix this because I think other people are coming from other cities, are tourists, and they're seeing this availability. And it's something else that makes our city more attractive. So, and I think there's enough liability, protection, as has been explained, to protect us as a city. So, Counsel Savage?
I agree with Counsel Saly to table this till they can come back with what we requested.
Okay. I guess Counsel Saly, I think we probably need a motion on that thing.
I will make a motion that we table the Bird scooter agreement, even if it could be the very next meeting in two weeks, she could bring back that information for us on the liability, on the ridership, whether they're tourists or locals. Was there any other items?
Age verification.
Age verification.
The age verification. Also, you had mentioned a special 3-1-1 email. I'd like some information on that because we are currently the complaint department. And so, certainly getting this to the right person would be a little bit better for everybody. So, I'd like to table it until we can get that information, but sooner rather than later.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of tabling this matter till we receive further information, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Sounds like we had four for it and three against it. So, four for tabling it. So, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 4B, electronic billboard messaging policy. And Kylie, thanks again. I'm sorry, I should have, so she's gone.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
Okay, and we wait to hear from you again.
Thank you.
Okay. 4B, electronic billboard messaging policy. At the August 15th council meeting, the city manager presented information regarding an electronic billboard policy. Counsel directed staff to produce a policy that allowed governmental and nonprofit messaging that benefited the city of Kingman. This policy is clear and can be uniformly applied. It will allow for governmental and nonprofit groups to post-approved messages that benefit the city and its citizens. In addition, the policy sets a messaging price structure and, of course, council discretion. Acting City Manager, Tina, do you have any information on this? Or is this a Carl question?
That was me. I drafted this.
Okay, Carl.
So, I guess I don't really have a whole lot to state because that states everything that this addresses. Counsel had asked about obviously being able to expand the use of the messaging billboard as opposed to what we had last time. Setting it up this way does allow us to expand the use to the nonprofits and to get a little more reach in it, but still putting in enough restrictions that we can try and keep some of the messaging that we don't want on there that would be inappropriate. And then counsel again asked for a fee-based structure. This is something that Tina came up with. I had found, I think, one other organization that did charge a fee. So, it seems like it's barely reasonable to do something along this line. It seems to be, I shouldn't say seems. I tried to make it clear enough that the staff that'll be utilizing it and enforcing this will be able to make sure the application is uniformly applied across the board just so we don't lose some kind of discretionary area. Because as soon as you start working on, you know, speech issues, you just want to try and keep yourself as consistent as possible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cooper. After reading this again, I know, I think you put the safeguards in there. And as Carl, we have talked before, it's better to have restricted to start with and then widen out as, over time, as we see what happens. And so, I think this accomplishes that. Counsel? Counsel Saly?
Okay, so, my first question is on the second page in the middle. It talks about messages must be submitted at least a week prior and a second request may not be submitted. And then it talks about each entity or organization may request two messages. So, when you say entity, you mean anyone other than the city? Because we, there was kind of this weird gray area in the last meeting where we talked about, well, if we were involved, like we're chamber members and if the chamber has an event. So, when you say entity, what does that really mean?
Non-city.
Okay, so, no longer we're partners. It's just, if it's a chamber, it's a chamber event, it's the chambers.
Correct. When I say non-city, so if we're sponsoring an event, it's a city.
Okay.
It's a city idea.
Okay.
This is to, I guess, to stop the spamming of messages that can occur?
Yeah.
So, we try just to regulate a little bit more?
I just wanted clarity on that because I thought we were muddying the water a little bit. If we were saying, well, we're a member of the chamber, so the chamber doesn't count, you know, as a separate entity, I just thought that would muddy it. But I wanted to take this a step further and ask about how the council feels about removing the two messages to be displayed per quarter. Because, for example, the chamber, they constantly have events and they would definitely go over and some of those may not be an event that we were participating in. First Friday is a good example, that there's three First Fridays. That's, and that's, you know, on top of all the other normal chamber events. And we would definitely want to promote every First Friday because that benefits everybody and we do help out with those. So, I would just kind of, I would like to remove the two per quarter and see how it goes. If you had one entity that was sort of, I mean, what is taking advantage? I, you know, I don't know. It's, we all win. So, I would like to take out that limit of two per quarter. Two more paragraphs down. I also would like to remove the limit of no more than two non-city messages on each sign during any one week. I think you're going to have weeks where the city doesn't have anything going on from a marketing perspective. From a marketing perspective, right now, the message that's been on there is a couple weeks, it's been the same message for a couple weeks. So I'm betting most people aren't even reading them right now because you've seen it. So if the city leaves up the same things weeks on end, people won't read it anymore. So I think that we should remove this, and that way, the city is also only promoting for maybe a week at a time so that those messages are fresh and still being read by the passerby's. And then my last thing was on the cost. If you've ever fundraised for our local charities, you'll know most of your, most of the donations are $50 or $100 at a pop. So when we talk about $100 for a week, you're probably finding one person to write you a check to cover the expensive advertising for your event. And that's kind of tough as well, especially for a smaller nonprofit. So I would like to recommend, first of all, that we do it for seven days, Sunday through Saturday, everybody. This makes it easier on staff. They're not pulling them, you know, only posting them on weekends or whatever. We just do a seven-day posting for $50, and it's Sunday through Saturday. And especially because down below, the weekends cost more, but I would argue that Sunday's not even a more beneficial day because that's the day we have the least amount of traffic in town. That's why I ride my bike on Sundays. So, and most of your events are on Friday and Saturday anyway. So those are my few recommendations for changes.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Any more comments or questions? Counselor Savage?
A question for you, Carl. In there, it talks about city-sponsored events, correct?
Correct.
Okay, a golf tournament is an example. The city discounts that green feed as a charitable donation, in-kind donation. So would that be considered a city function for a nonprofit?
I don't think that's a city sponsoring event by providing a discount, but that's just me. If that's the policy that the acting city manager would like to adopt, that's more than willing to adopt that to address your concern.
I don't believe that we discount any of the golf rates for golf tournaments. I'll get confirmation from...
We actually have Mr. Mearsman here, if he wants to clarify. Mike?
Yeah, they're not really discounted for the nonprofits. They're discounted by the number of people in them. That's what they are. So it's, right, per...
Okay. Anything else, which is Savage? Any other thoughts?
I...
Yes, Counselor?
I agree in part with Councilwoman Steely. I like the idea of...
Would you like to look at my notes?
Man, look at your notes. I like the part about not putting a quarterly cap of two messages. I agree with that completely because I'm getting kind of tired of seeing the same road improvement signs. But I understand there's road improvements, and those are the type of things we want to see around the city. But I agree with Councilwoman Steely. And, but I disagree. I think that there should be a cap of two non-city messages, well, per entity on a sign. And then I currently like the fee structure as provided by Attorney Cooper. So it's a split with me.
Can I just jump in on the current messaging? It's just because we're, it's just set up. It's, there's, and I don't, I don't know how many messages we have in development, but I think there's a significant amount that the city wants to promote, which is kind of why we came up with these limits. But, you know, if the council would like to modify that, I'm willing to draft whatever we need to draft.
Can I?
Counselor, yes, Counselor Staley?
So what made me think about this is that September is a very busy month for Kingman, and if you think about, you've got the rodeo, you've got 4-H kids selling their animals at their auction, you've got the fair. Right there, you have three events that are non-city events, and we should be promoting all of our heritage events that make Kingman what it is, like the rodeo and our 4-H kids and all of that. But if you have this limit where you've only got two non-city messages during the week, you're not going to, in those busy months, you're not going to be able to promote everything. So I would rather see some flexibility. And we have, when the city has really important messaging, multiple messages, then that week, maybe there's only one event, or should take precedence. And, you know, the clerk, I guess, is the ultimate decision-maker here, right? But I think Annie can make that decision and say, well, this is the fair, and this is the rodeo, and 4-H, or whatever, and then we've got these city messages and sort of balance it out. And maybe, maybe even half the day it's more city, and the other half it's more events. I mean, those things can be worked out, but if we approve this to say only two today, we're locked in.
And I'd like to say I don't have a problem with that, and if you were to remove that restriction, we still have, towards the top, it talks about the priority of the messaging.
Yeah, right.
So that factor is still there, so we can address it that way. I think when I saw it in some of these other cities that did this sort of thing, and it was our discussion, was just, sometimes it makes it easier to make a decision that you have drafted when you have people screaming at you about, why isn't mine there? Well, this is why. Sometimes it just makes it easier on the receiving end. But, you know, like I say, council has some ideas, and I'm willing to incorporate those.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
So how many messages at eight seconds, a minimum of eight seconds, how many messages can be rotated?
Tina has that answer, because Tina's amazing.
So eight seconds per day, per message equates to 10,800 messages a day.
Wow.
Okay, then I am absolutely in favor of getting rid of the two non-city messages, that we can rotate those messages and still be getting in front of people multiple times. So I agree with that. I also agree with the rate structure. I mean, I feel like if you're fundraising and it's for a good cause, you're going to find someone to give you $100. I really feel that way. So, but I am in favor of the, one about, or your point about the two messages a quarter. I think that just gets just too confusing, and it's too much work on staff. I just feel like that just needs to be stricken from the document. That's all I had.
I concur with Vice Mayor and with...
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Pat, yes. Counselor Walker?
I'm not as good-looking, but I'm not as smart.
No, no, I was saying him, and then I was looking at you. Anyway.
These boards were originally put for the betterment of the community, you know, to get the message out, something's going on in our city. You know, the city should have priority, which we do in here, but promoting the fair, the high schools, the, you know, all the nonprofits, I don't think we should limit it to a quarter. I don't even know if I'm good with what we're charging them. I mean, First Friday, you know, are we going to be charging the chamber to put this every First Friday on? I mean, that promotes tourism and tax dollars being spent when people see what's going on. So I kind of, I'm not sure if we're doing the right thing by charging these people to be on the board, you know? As long as it's bettering the community, I think we should be able to put it on this board. If it's Little League signups, First Friday, city council meeting, Parks and Rec meeting, you know, that's kind of where I'm at with it. So I don't know what everyone else kind of spoke, but definitely get rid of the two messages. But if it's for the betterment of the community, let's get it on the board as much as it needs to be.
Okay.
So can, I just want to make sure I understand, right now, we're talking about removing the two per quarter, the two messages. The pricing structure was added at council's request, because originally, we did not have a pricing structure. So, but again, whatever council wants to do, that's what I'm here for, just trying to keep it legal and trying to make sure we accomplish what the council desires.
And I'm torn on that because, you know, nonprofit, obviously, they are looking for funds, they're trying to raise funds, and so you bring up a good point, Carl. So on the rate structure, I could go either way. So Counselor Savage or Counselor Ward? Would you like to say anything about it?
No, I'm all right with the way it is. Other than that, I would remove the two.
Two messages per quarter?
No, I might have two.
Okay.
The two, the two a day and two a quarter?
Yeah. Did you catch that, Carl?
I got that. I'm still waiting on rate structure.
So it sounds like the majority, most of us are in favor of the rate structure.
Yeah. And Mayor, if I may?
Yes, correct, Counselor.
The reason I'm in favor of the rate structure is because we're going to be recouping our expense that the city had to put into these billboards. I think, my memory serves me right, it was $494,000 for the six signs, at least. I think that's what it was on the capital improvement project. Is that right?
I think it was about just over $500,000 in total. Is that right, Jack?
Just...
That's correct.
Just a little bit over $500,000. And my position is this, if your value, if your message is valuable enough to post it on our boards, you should pay a nominal fee to get it there. It's a very small nominal fee. We're not asking you to pay an arm and a leg, and if it is worth that much, you're going to be making the opportunity cost, cost-benefit analysis. It is, then you put it up. If it's not, you're not putting it up, and we recoup some of the expenses that we incurred.
Okay. So it sounds like we need a motion leaving the rate structure alone, canceling...
I don't think I really need a motion.
Do you need anything?
No, I'll bring it back to you.
You'll bring it back to us? Okay.
With the changes that I've deduced from council.
Thank you, Attorney Cooper.
It seems like that...
Can I make one more comment?
Sure, Counsel.
In response to my, to my partner over there, you know, I would just say, I don't think we should be making up this cost on the backs of nonprofits. And I would remind you that the community is the one that paid for the signs with their tax dollars, with their sales tax. Half of that was paid by tourists, but the other half, we already paid for. And so trying to recoup that kind of money, you know, I think that $100 is, I still say it's too much when I think about, but, I mean, I'm always trying to fundraise for somebody, and at 50 and 100 bucks a time, just to put on the billboards, it would be expensive for them. And we want to promote those events because those events, in turn, help us and help us make more sales tax. So...
So you're comfortable with the...
Thank you for a chance for rebuttal.
You're comfortable with the rest of the rate structure, basically, except for the entire week?
No.
I know you had a second one.
What I wanted to do, what I was suggesting is that everybody just signs up for seven days, Sunday to Saturday, instead of just a weekend or just a weekday. To make it easier, you get seven days, and I was saying for $50. But I would also support just making it at no fee.
Well, and remember, I think you and Vice Mayor, I'm going to put you on this, you both wanted to have fees.
I did, and it seemed like a good idea as a way of sort of maybe filtering out some of the potential problems that Carl tried to make me uncomfortable in that meeting. But then I looked back at this, and I thought, who would be using it? And that $100 for seven days seemed expensive to me for a nonprofit. So that's why I said $50 for seven days. And then forget the rest of the structure, I think we're just overcomplicating it.
Mayor Watkins?
Yes, and then Vice Mayor?
No, you have your...
No, now I get rebuttal too. Sorry.
It's all right, this is why we're discussing this.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I think I might have requested the fee structure at the previous council meeting, and I was highly in favor of it, to offset our expenses. And I understand that this was already funded on the taxpayer's back, but there were some of our taxpayer citizens who weren't for these signs. At least they could sleep comfortably knowing that it's not just, well, at your expense, and we're putting things up there for free. And if, in an ideal world, or in Cameron's ideal world, it would be sign position, one of the six on each sign goes to the highest bidder. That's how I would do it, and then people would outbid each other to get the spot if they really value it that much. So, but I think that the fee structure, the way it is, is appropriate. It's nominal, and if you think your message is worth it, well, there's a popular saying, put your money where your mouth is.
True, Cameron. But then there's the other set of the half of the populace that says, hey, my taxpayer, especially those who are members of nonprofits, paid for this, they would like to see the benefit of doing it for free. So what Counselor Walker said has merit, a lot of merit, in just not charging a fee at all. So...
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
I still, I still stand with Counselor Pat that we should charge. We are going to have nonprofits from outside of the city, non-city tax-paying individuals that will come and use space on those boards. And so for that... They have to be from the city? No, not the nonprofits.
The nonprofits that will be...
They have to be registered to the city? No, it doesn't say that.
That are sponsoring an event within the city of Kingman that is open to the public?
Okay, so it could be a nonprofit outside of the city, holding an event within the city, correct? Thank you. I say no more.
So Counsel, what are we, it sounds like, Carl, we're sort of...
Well, you've got somebody that wants to speak.
Yes, and we do have a citizen that was, Ms. Wilson, would you like to come up and weigh in?
Janet Wilson, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and city council members. I am a resident of Kingman. My question to you, because I haven't seen all the paperwork that you guys get, nonprofit, can it be political nonprofits that are advertising their garage sale that is benefiting high school scholarships here locally?
Good point.
So that's why I wanted to restrict so many things in the past. But we do address that no political messaging is going to be allowed on that, especially, you know, especially during the election season. So if somebody is a declared candidate, won't be able to message.
But I think, as Ms. Wilson said, this is not, she's not political, it's just a political organization that is sponsoring a fundraiser.
For high school, for Kingman High School scholarships.
So I see it's a tough question.
It's, that's why I wanted to clarify it. And the other thing is, just because you spent almost $5 million on them, or $500,000...
$500,000. Yeah, let's not take it there.
Just call me Kamala, never mind. My question to you is, there's ongoing electricity that is not budgeted in. So these cost money to run that you have to think about. I mean, just because it was paid for doesn't mean the bill stops. There's maintenance, there's, you know, graffiti cleanup and all that kind of stuff. So it is an ongoing thing, and yes, as nonprofits do, we're raising money for our scholarships, so we'll have to give up $100 and work twice as hard to get that money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wilson. So, yeah, I think we need to move along, but Carl, I think, I'm sort of thinking the consensus should be that we leave the rate schedule there. Because as was brought forward, you know, there is maintenance, I'm sure we have a warranty for a certain amount of years on that, but there is power that's being supplied for there that we have to pay for.
And I would say as well as that, is you're going to have staff time to input the message.
That's right, and it is.
But I'm not advocating for it, I'm just saying those are those issues.
You're bringing that forward. And as Counselor Pat mentioned, you know, it's a nominal charge, and it gets the message out, so...
And I guess I could make one last statement.
Yes, Mr. Cooper.
I will get this corrected, bring it back to the next meeting. If we ever discover that we have a problem with it, we can always revisit.
And that's a good point. We can always come back to it. So Carl, if you would bring, do that for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel, and staff, and everybody involved. Item 5, new business, 5A, adopt a notice of intent for short-term rental and vacation rental permit application fee. In an effort to recover the costs associated with administering the short-term rental and vacation rental permitting process, an application fee of $60 is being recommended for council's consideration. Tonight's agenda item marks the first step in the fee adoption process, which is providing a report that supports the fee and adopting a notice of intent to consider the fee at the November 7th council meeting. Staff recommends council adopt the notice of intent. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Counsel. So with the short-term and vacation rental ordinance adopted at the last meeting, now is the time to bring back to council for their consideration an application fee. Now, the statute does allow for up to $250 to be recovered in these costs. However, when we evaluate the cost of providing this service, it is what we expect to be, not more than $60, when you look at the utility billing and licensing team and the police department's efforts in managing this down the road. Maybe that's different, but that's what we expect for now. So bringing for your consideration to go through that fee... So bringing for your consideration to go through that fee adoption process of putting the $60 into place, that would be an annual fee, because the application is required to be filed on an annual basis.
Okay, questions for Tina?
Yes.
Counselor Savage.
This may be silly, but is that $60 per property?
It is $60 per property, and that's not a silly question.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, can we have a, yes, Captain.
I did have one, and forgive me if I missed it in the actual ordinance. But does it say it's an annual?
It does.
Oh, okay. I was just, I was wondering what the annual cost to just automatically let those roll over and renew, so...
So in the ordinance, they have to reapply, meaning they've got to fill out the application. We've got to go through the background checks again, and we've got to process it. So same time, and that's done annually. And that's done annually.
Okay.
And that's a nominal charge to cover all that expensive... It is. Thank you, Cameron. Okay.
Mayor, are you allowing comments on these or no?
Yes, Counselor Pat.
I voted no on it last time. I'm gonna be voting no on it again.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ward?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Can we then have a motion to adopt a notice of intent for short-term rental and vacation rental permit application fee?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number six, department reports, six A, requested work sessions. And Tina, again.
Yes, good evening again. Thank you. So over the last few months, we have received some requests from the council to hold some work sessions. And with the transition in leadership, we wanted to bring back to you as staff, kind of a recap of what we recollected from the different meetings that we've had as far as which work sessions were requested. So that's first, we want to confirm that what we have recalled is correct, so that we can share that with the interim city manager. And then also, part of the agenda, I guess, for each of these items, we did receive some clear direction on the development processes and policies as far as what we wanted to cover at that work session. Some of the others, though, were just general work sessions. So we've drafted some potential talking points at some of those work sessions and just really wanted some direction. If that, if that, if those items aren't the correct talking points, what kind of talking points that we do need to cover at those work sessions? These aren't listed in any sort of priority, but we can certainly take priority right now for when those need to be held and how soon they need to be held. I do want to point out a couple of items. So on the development processes and policies, the third, sorry, the fourth bullet point, the review the list of codes that P&amp;Z is recommending to be revised or removed and create a timeline for completion. That is something that our community development team has already put together, and they'd like to bring something back to the council sooner than later. So we'd like to potentially eliminate that bullet point from this item and bring that back sooner for your consideration, if that works. And then, again, on the others, they're just ideas of talking points, not knowing. So if there are any comments on those, or different directions, or timelines as far as when you're wanting to cover these, that would be great.
Okay, Counselor. Yes, Counselor Sayley.
This first block, the development processes and policies, I had requested this meeting and had asked for each of these items. And I believe that we had discussed it, that we wanted to wait until a new city manager was in place to go through each of these and talk about if any ordinance were, if we wanted to create one and put those in place. And I'm happy to hear that the zoning codes that we've received complaints about are already being talked about, and we have a plan for moving forward on those. There, one item that I do not see is that we agreed to a regular work session. Well, let me clarify. I don't know if it's a work session or just a session between all of the contracting community and city staff as we keep moving forward. But that was something that we had talked about, is keeping those meetings happening so that the dialogue is still open and everybody's having their voices heard.
So I do know that the dialogue is still open and meetings are happening. Are you, are you looking at the big picture? So many developers and contractors at the table with our team at the table, not just those one-on-ones?
Yes, it was to be a quarterly meeting where everybody, right? You guys are with me, yeah.
Okay.
Am I crazy? Yeah, we all were gonna come together and then just keep that moving forward and making sure that we're making progress.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Counselor?
Well, I wanted to make one other comment, and that was, for a while, when our interim manager, Jim Bacon, was here, we would have meetings that started out as a work session, where we had the freedom to discuss these items. And, I mean, obviously, they've built up, and we have a lot right now. But you could have a work session where you have an open dialogue and get some direction. And then we would start our regular meeting. And what has taken the place of that time now is the reports, these department reports that take up so much time at the end of our meetings. Not that they're not good and usable, but I felt like having those work sessions was a very helpful thing when we had issues that we were working on, such as these. The council was able to come together and sort of find common ground and give direction. We could work on those. If there aren't any items for a work session, you just wouldn't have that part, and you would go right into the council meeting. And it was, it was literally a work session, and then the council meeting was posted as soon as the work session ended. And I just think that that gave us an opportunity to get a lot more work done and to do it collectively. So I know that's not necessarily this item, but I would throw that out there, that maybe changing up how we're running our meetings, what might be helpful for a while, and then we're not having second work sessions that are in addition to the council meeting.
And we were all together here already, like, for example, starting at four o'clock, having a work session, and then five o'clock, we're in a council meeting.
Exactly, sort of, yeah, whatever time works for everybody. But right, we've, most of us already have this day, this afternoon blocked off. We know to be here. And then that would give us a chance to just openly come together on all of these issues and work through them.
Okay. Also, for clarification, you mentioned, for example, these requested work sessions. You want to start, we want to do these with the interim city manager or wait till we have our city manager on board?
I think on the first item, we had said until the manager was on, until we had a manager. And I know we won't have that report back from the consultant until October, anyway. I'm good with either, you know, but I almost think we should tackle some of these big issues with our new permanent manager.
And on the same token, too, I like that thought, but I think we also, even with our interim city manager, a lot of these things we need to be moving on fairly quickly. And so we might need to...
Okay.
It might take a while. I hope it doesn't.
I know.
To get our city manager hired. But our interim city manager, I think we need to include in discussion, too.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I just want to, I just want to go about this in the best way possible so that we're able to make good decisions and move our city forward and improve our processes.
Thank you. Counselors, any other comments or questions?
I'd like to prioritize the EV project. Had some discussions with the EV folks today, and they're working on some timelines. And so I'd like to make this a priority.
And do you want to have that as a work session, for example, as was suggested by Counselor Sayley, that we have it at four o'clock? And that way, for example, let's say...
We may have to, with them, we may have to do a separate work session outside of a council meeting, just because of their timelines.
Okay.
So, but I would like to move that up as priority.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, on the...
Counselor Ward?
On the development processes and policies, I don't think we can afford to wait till we get a new city manager. I think we need to stay on top of that.
Okay.
And whatever it takes to get that done.
Okay. Anything else? Tina, I think you have the guidance that you need.
I do. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council. Item number seven, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Tina, we'll pick on you again.
I don't have any. Thank you very much, though.
That's all right. Okay, thank you. Counselor Walker?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Counselor Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight.
Since we're going down the row, I usually wait to save you for last, next to last, but...
That's fine. Nothing tonight, thanks.
Counselor Ward?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Sayley? Counselor Pat?
Christmas might be coming early for some today. But I've received a professional business opportunity in a different county. So it's with a heavy heart, and without further ado, I'm tendering my resignation effective immediately.
Counselor Pat, sorry to hear about that, but congratulations on...
People falling out of chairs already.
Onward and upward.
Yeah.
So we wish the best for you. Okay.
Mayor.
Counsel will have, council will have some more work to do with, along with those lines. Yes, Vice Mayor.
So I did want to make an announcement. I wanted to congratulate Judge Singer on his win.
Oh, yes.
In the Veterans' First Softball Tournament. We beat Lake Havasu, so I just want to go on the record and congratulate Judge Singer, who is not here, but I'm sure he'll hear this.
Good thought. I appreciate you remembering that. I have actually no comments. And of course, once again, I thank everybody for our volunteerism that happens in our city. And it's, I'm always standing in awe of all the good people that we have and trying to push positive things forward in our city. And just want to, once again, continually thank you. Council number, our item number eight, council request for future reports and updates. I think we've covered most of that already.
I have one I'd like to add, and I don't know what ordinance it is, but it has to do with new subdivisions. And I've had a lot of calls this last couple of weeks, and I've had a lot of conversations. Apparently, the city of Kingman, I don't know when we adopted it, but newer subdivisions, we're now requiring eight inches of base with three inches of asphalt. But what I'm hearing, and I've made some calls myself to other cities, they're all at six inches of base, two inches of asphalt. Is this a mag spec? You know, why did we adopt it when we adopted it? Because it's adding $46 a running foot per road. Now, you take a subdivision that has 30 lots, they're 100-foot lots. I mean, you can do the math. All of a sudden, you're in the, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, on a new subdivision. So I'd like to discuss that to see what the benefit, what were we thinking? Because the county doesn't require that yet.
Okay.
Are we, are we just trying to get ahead of everybody? Or was it because we weren't doing our maintenance like we should have been? We thought the roads would last longer? Don't know what it is, but let's talk about it at a future meeting.
Bring it forward. Tina? Okay.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, without further comment, then, I think we are adjourned. We adjourn this meeting.